We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just, to sound us and judgment when making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Light given Spirit can ever dwell in their hearts, and that barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
Amen.
Blessed be this nation to its ally, the United States of America, a true republic which is seen, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, as I usually do every year, I would like to congratulate the students who have graduated from Michigan to the American High School, and wish them the best on their endeavors. I'll call me up here. Here now, I'll call for a response to your reports. License and permits.
As of June 17th, 2021, we have received one application for an off-premises catering permit from Northern Maine Brewing Company, LLC, for the Maine Potato Blossom Festival, and one off-premises catering permit for the Par &amp; Grill Restaurant, LLC, for a private wedding at Farm Park.
Financial report.
We received May revenue sharing in the amount of $51,853.27 on May 20th, 2021. Total revenue sharing received to date is $440,559.48. This puts us at 93.19% of budget versus 91.67%. We are now $7,166.64 above our budgeted amount. As previously discussed, last year at council meeting, there is a unique opportunity this year again with Arustic Waste Solutions. They have a reserve account that they can offer a 1% interest rate promissory note to the member municipalities. They are able to offer us a $1 million loan that will be paid back by February 28th, 2022. This again saves us an estimated $11,840 in interest payments. The recommendation is that council allows the town manager to sign the promissory note as discussed with AWS.
Can we discuss on that?
Yes, please. Well, you need a second first, and then anything.
I have a motion and a second to allow the town manager to interagree with AWS. Any discussion?
Are we able to extend the term of the note in order to lower the payment amount?
We might be able to, yes. It's up for negotiation.
I think that's something that we should consider.
We should certainly consider that.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we review further and see if we can extend the term of the note.
Yep, we can.
Hang on for a moment.
You can. I'll have to ask for a special council meeting before June 30th to do that, but.
Well, we could approve it. Yeah, we could approve it, and I have an arrangement of such, as long as it's documented.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second to allow the town manager to agree with AWS with the amendment from Council Levy. Any other discussion? Here now, I'll call for a little applause. Aye. Melissa.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
I also want to.
Financial information for May. The checking account balance as of 5/31/2021 was $1,346,348.19. That includes the promissory note with AWS. Machias Savings Balance was $5,000. Total excise tax collected in May was $60,606.85. State revenue sharing was $51,583.27. Real estate and personal property taxes collected was $44,860.93. As of May 31st, 2021, our revenue is at 84.96%. Tax collections are $3,281,363.89 compared to $2,767,945.97 for the same period last year. This shows an increase in tax collections of $513,417.92 compared to last year. Tax collections are also better than they were a year ago. Last year, we had 350 unpaid tax bills for a total of $503,783.62. For the same period this year, we have 319 unpaid tax bills for a total of $427,427.13. This means that we have 31 less bills, tax bills totaling $76,356.49 to collect. Expenses as of May 31st, 2021 are at 87.26% versus our budgeted 91.67%. Loan balances as of May 31st, 2021, Langley number 5275, $18,616.63. Langley number 5277, $6,699.37. The Public Works Equipment bids on June 2nd, 2021, the town clerk, Billy Joe Sharp, at 12:00 PM noon, opened all bids received for the Fort Fairfield Public Works Department equipment sale in as-is, where-is condition. Equipment for sale was the following. 1991 Ford Econoline van, 7,288 miles, transmission issues, minimum bid $500. 2001 Chevy 2500 4x4, engine oil leaks, minimum bid $800. 1996 GMC One-Ton 4x4, 97,068 miles, frame issues, minimum bid $500. 1999 Dodge One-Ton, minimum bid $300. 1992 Hyster snow blower, engine issues, bad gearbox and blower, minimum bid $300. We received two bids on the 1991 Econoline van, one from Norm Soucy for $551, and from Timothy Browning. However, the minimum bid requirement was not met from Mr. Browning. We received two bids on the 2001 Chevy 2500, one from Norm Soucy for $852, and Jack Shannon for $825. We received three bids for the 1996 GMC One-Ton, Norm Soucy for $602, Timothy Browning for $601, and Fred St. Peter for $525. We received two bids for the 1999 Dodge One-Ton from Norm Soucy for $502, and Timothy Browning for $401. We received one bid for the 1992 Hyster snow blower from Darren Hanson for $350. Recommendation is that council accepts the highest bid received for each piece of equipment.
Motion and second to accept the highest bid received for each equipment. Here now, I'll call for a vote. Scott.
Aye.
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 Allison.
Aye.
Allison, what?
Mr. Radeski is not here this evening.
He showed up last night.
Yep.
All business approved fiscal year 2122 budget.
Public hearings were held on April 21st, 2021, and May 5th, 2021. There were no public comments at the April public hearing, and one citizen spoke at the May public hearing. There have been several discussions throughout the fiscal year 2122 budget process. Council's directive to the town manager was to reduce budget costs. The town manager worked with her department heads to present a final budget proposed to council that reflects those directives in the most fiscally responsible way that still provides safe and effective services to the citizens of Fort Fairfield. The budget presented at the, I'm sorry, April 28th, 2021 public budget hearing had a projected deficit of $1,054,000. The budget presented at the May 5th public hearing had a projected deficit of $734,673, and the budget presented at the June 3rd, 2021 public budget hearing had a deficit of The actual projected deficit for fiscal year 2122 is $434,926,000. We do not have the final MSAD number 20 budget, as the Maine State Legislature has not had their final vote on the 55% for the Maine State school districts as of today that I know of. Legislature is still in session. As I have stated at several meetings, council cannot remove the reserve account funding request by Maine State statute. Council is responsible for funding capital improvement planning, CIPs, each fiscal year. They are required components of municipal comprehensive plans under the state's growth management law, 30-A subsection, subsection 4312, especially subsection 4326, 3-A-B. You cannot remove the minimum amount requested for the reserve accounts. Myself and my staff have taken every suggestion from council very seriously throughout this entire budget process, and have presented you with the best, most cost-effective and fiscally responsible budget we can without losing services. Allowing this budget not to pass does not change the cost to effectively and safely provide the services for our citizens. Allowing this budget not to pass because there is discourse from those that do not want to pay their fair and just share of the tax burden does not change the cost to effectively and safely provide the services for our citizens. Allowing this budget not to pass does not change the cost of what will mean for our citizens when the services are not able to effectively and safely provide for our citizens. It is a very difficult job to be a counselor. You are expected to make budgetary decisions for all of your citizens and those that are part of your community. That's why council has a town manager to present the budget information to you based on careful and thought-out research and decision-making with the department heads and the town manager. Council has the responsibility to provide for all of its citizens, and we do not take that lightly in the town office. Should council not pass tonight's proposed budget and does not set forth another proposed budget by charter, we must continue at the current budget. That also does not change the cost to provide the services effectively and safely. I believe council wants what is best for the citizens of Fort Fairfield, and I would encourage you to pass the proposed budget for fiscal year 2122 at the requested 1.6% increase. And before I read the recommendation, I would just like to point out again to council, we are only asking for $168,278 more this year than last year, and that's the 1.6% increase. And again, that $434,926 is what we are asking for above what we are getting revenue for, and that is no different than what the school has asked for above the $984,947 that they asked, above the $1,247,936.67. My recommendation to council is that council approves the proposed budget for the fiscal
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table 2122 budget for further review.
Your motion and second to table for how long?
Until we're ready.
Any discussion?
I will read for council charter. If the council fails to adopt a budget for the ensuing year by the first day of such ensuing year, the amounts appropriated for the current year shall be deemed to be appropriated for the ensuing year on a month-to-month basis until such time as the council adopts a budget for the ensuing year. This goes into effect because council meets once a month. That's why it's calling for month-to-month basis, but it also indicates to council that you have until June 30th to pass a proposed budget for the next ensuing year. So council can hold special council meeting anytime council would like.
Second to table this budget. Any other discussion?
I would just like to take a minute and explain somewhat of the purpose of our delay. We've gathered much information from our citizens here in the community, and I want to thank everybody for the input. Your input is what we take and work with. That's why we're here. And I don't like turning budgets down, but under the circumstances on financial status, not only on our municipality, but in our community, has been affected greatly, especially the past two years. And I have concerned citizens in my place of business every day with financial burdens that normally wouldn't be a problem. And on like following years of budgets that I've set on the town council, it was easy to run through, and everybody's doing a great job. Our town manager's doing a great job. We're all trying to do a great job. But under the circumstances of the financial burden that we all are faced with, and the amount of exposure this year that we're getting from our taxpayers off the street, I feel that it's got us where we are, and I think there's still room to work this budget. And for them reasons, that's the decision I feel is the best for our community tonight.
If I could share also what's been stated, there's been a lot of work done so far, and it's been probably one of the hardest budgets to look at because of everything that's been happening. But at the same time, we are where we are, and we have services that we must take care of. And I am not in favor of tableing it tonight. I'm in favor of going forward, because we have made cuts, and we won't be able to please everybody. We've had some strong comments made by citizens that have been here in these meetings. At us personally, we're doing our best. We know our position as town councils, and we know their responsibility, and our responsibility is for the whole town, not just a certain few. And to be spread, if you look well and being not really knowing what you're doing, there's been a lot of work, there's still a lot of work to be done. But I would encourage the citizens to, I might get too hyped up, and by just a few people, and I think it's just a few people, and I understand your concerns. We all have concerns. I'm a resident, I pay taxes. And do I like paying on the pay? Absolutely not, but it is what it is. And I choose to do that. I choose to pay my taxes. So we have all kinds of responsibilities. We have a lot of work has been done here. Our town manager has done, and others have done excellent job. There are wants that we have to say no to, to departments, and they know that, because we're in a critical year. So I would ask you for your patience and just allow us to continue to do our job and to do what we've been elected for, to serve the citizens of Fort Fairfield. And by citizens, I mean the whole town. That includes the responsibilities that we have with the services that are being provided to our community. And you know, we're in a new year, a strange year, somewhat, but we'll adjust, and we'll get by.
I just want to comment as well. I think, my opinion as far as extending is because we are still waiting on some answers for funding from the state, which would be within the next few days, correct?
Only for the education side.
Right, but it will still change the numbers a little bit.
It could.
It could, yes. So since that's within a few days, I'd like to have a little bit more accurate picture. Just, I'm not saying extend for months on end and affect the departments, I'm saying extend a little bit to be able to just kind of see those numbers a little bit more. You know, I think that if we can wait just a little bit longer and see a little bit clearer picture, I would feel more comfortable with that. Again, a lot of work has been put in by us, by the department heads, by the town manager, you know, by the citizens. It's been great to have extra input from everybody. It's much appreciated. But with $434,000 deficit, I feel like an extra 13 days is something that I'm willing to take. So it needs to be that long, but I hope it doesn't.
But with a $400,000 deficit, that's only $168,000 more than we had last year. We've got services that we have to supply for the town center in the last public meeting, and each department had to get up and gave a thing, and then a couple of departments got up there and gave praise for the job, and praise for the service, and they get down to Fort Fairfield, and even had people applauding different departments. We have to pay for the services. When we started this whole thing with the EMS service, we understood that there was going to be an extra cost, additional cost. And that goes without saying. We've got to protect this town and citizens of Fort Fairfield. We have one lady here just last, she had to take her husband to the doctor. She had to wait for the EMS, but her husband would have died. And my thing is, with the fire department, when you have a day doctor and you had a fire, there was nobody to answer, and it's ridiculous. The fire chief told me at the time, he went through a call, and he told me four times before somebody responded. Now, how long do we have to wait? We can't wait for somebody, we can't wait for an hour, given when somebody's life's in danger. And this proposed budget, I mean, a lot of this is going towards the EMS side, and this is a service that we all, as a council, approve. And to wait, to wait and put off for the hearing of the school, what the school's going to do, we do this every year, and we never know what the school's going to do until after the budget's passed anyway. It's never been passed before the full budget, and to hold it off and saying, well, we might get a little bit more money here, is, I think is irresponsible. And just if we hear the vote on the budget, the budget's only 1.3%, more than what was last year.
1.6%. It's only 1.6% more.
More than last year. Anyway, we're here to vote on the budget, not to keep it tabled, because we want to wait for something. We have to move on for the citizens, and we have to go through next year. We have to look for the safety of these people.
Well, we are still getting those services currently, and we do still have funds in current budget to operate at this point in time.
Till June 30th.
Well, it's not June 30th yet, and I am not comfortable making a decision on something that I think that there are still numbers changing, and I know they will continue to change, and I know that that's the way the budget works, because there's always things changing. I understand that. But I just, I don't think it's fiscally responsible to be rushed into a decision when you sell the funds that are available to use, and we're not at that deadline yet.
Is it my turn? Yes, I'm opposed to table this budget. There are some things that we're still waiting for, but we've done this before at the June meeting. You're going to end up, I table this, by default, you're going to go with a 2021 budget, which, that's what I left to say anyway. We stick with that. I think we can get by with that, and give the employees the 1% that we voted several months ago, and make that work. You've got additional revenues coming in, in sharing, 5%, it's only one year. You've got some COVID money coming in, $337,000, you can use that. That's my proposal. Do not table this. We've gone over these numbers time, time, and time again. And I've looked at things, we've listened to the taxpayers, we've seen different things, we've talked to people that are familiar with different departments, and I want to go back to level 2021 for all the departments, with exception of the police department. We can continue with their proposed budget, $456,000, since we only have one employee at this time. I think we can get by with that. That's my proposal.
We have a motion and second to table it. Any other discussion?
Yes, every time that we've tabled it, we've come back over. So it's not just table it instantly, it's table it and work on it.
Any other discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote to table the 2122 budget, if you'd please. I'll call for a vote. Melissa.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Allison. Allison.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2122 budget as set for 2021, exceptions to the police department, and bring them back down to their proposed budget of $456,000.
Will I have a second?
So we have to have some sort of a motion on the budget, so you'll have to do another motion, but if the chairman would allow me to say a couple more things.
Will we vote on the table? My recommendation that you approve the proposed budget is, will you vote on your motion?
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Does that say that? Is your motion approved? Well, the new budget for, my recommendation was a new budget for 2122, it was last year's budget, the totals, that each department would stay the same, with exception of the police department, had proposed a budget for this year, lower. So that would be slight increase for the library administration to stay the same. The police department would go up to $456,000. The library would go up a little over $2,700.
I have all the actual numbers, if you'd like me to read them for you. So the difference in total administration is $13,779 in addition. That's 1.02%. The library is asking $2,786 less at 1.02%. The police department is asking $82,282 less at 1.18%. The fire department is asking $254,841 at 1.23%. Public Works is asking for $109,386 at 1.09%. Potato Blossom is asking for $1,400 at 1.03%. Recreation, having gone from a COVID year to a functioning year, at $23,738 at 1.15%. The community center increase, which we have no control over, the increase is 1.04% at Safety and sanitation, it came in at $1,541 less at 1%. Insurances, which again, we don't have any control over, have gone up $25,412 at 1.26%. Contingency plan to stay the same, our auditors suggested that's a good number for us. County tax has gone up $9,039 at 1.03%. MMA stays the same at $3,600. And MDC has gone up $79 at 0.1%. MSAD 20, should the 55% pass, will be at $209,518 less, 1.1%. So your total un- So your total unclassifieds are $200,400 less than last year. Your total expenditures are $72,560 less than last year. For a grand total, all we're asking for is $108,340 more. If you take the revenues out of that, what is left over is our excess or deficit of $434,926, which again, is only 1.6% more than last year at $168,278 for fiscal year 2122. I will remind council at the last public budget hearing, as well as the last council meeting, the department heads were very clear on this is the minimum cost-effective, safe budget to provide these services for our citizens. If we were to go back to the 2021 budget, it is not incurring the costs that we have no control over that have gone up around us extensively. Costs for fuel, costs for heat, costs for electricity. These things are all things that are out of our control. Costs for insurances, medicines, all of that stuff. These are things that we have to provide for our citizens for cost-effective, safe services. And at 1.6%, that's very minimal. $168,278 spread out over all of our taxpayers is not very much. And I will remind council that I do not, do not like to give a projected tax rate. I don't because I find it is unprofessional for me to do so without giving all of the information from the state. I have a projected mill rate, but it is not factual. If I were to give that to you tonight, you could not hold me to that mill rate. But I will tell you, it's not as scary as you're being told. If everything stays the same, it's not as scary as you're being told. We have a lot more information that's coming in from the state. We have been awarded sudden and severe, so we do not know what's going to happen. I really think that if you look through and you see where some of the departments have pulled great amounts of money from their departments, they did that knowing that the fire department needs their help. They have all pitched in and have made it effective for us to move forward. I really don't know how much more I can explain or educate about what it takes to provide and run these services. Our staff are hired because they are experts in what they do. They spend a great deal of time working to bring cost-effective things to our citizens. I will give you an example. We have a citizen who has, I don't know what that's called, edging along the pavement on their lawn. And because of the winter that we had, that was, the ground was so soft, the pavement is just a mess everywhere, across the state, across the country, not just here in Fort Fairfield, Maine. It is everywhere. And that's because we had a super mild winter, the ground did not freeze, and the plowing, it ruins the pavement when that happens. And she asked if we could please fix her edging for her. Well, we don't have in the budget this year, nor have we presented for next year to provide to have somebody come in and do that edging. But our public works department has put together a piece of equipment that effectively will be able to do that for that citizen and create a much better, nicer looking area for them. And we probably save the citizens $100,000 by doing that. This is what our staff does on a daily basis. They take the time to really work with our citizens and provide the services for them that they need and want. We are not asking for an excessive budget. There is not one want in this budget. We have removed those wanted projects. I will tell you that those wants are going to become needs if we don't address them at some point in time. But this is the bare minimum budget. 1.6%, that's all we're asking for. $168,278 spread out amongst all the taxpayers in a fair and just tax base. That's what we're asking for.
I can understand the hard work that's been done. I don't upset none of our counselors with our discussion. But when we get questions that are asked, and I'm just here to try to look at all the numbers. And as we feel that we're adding our input of great justice and numbers to make this work, we still have questions. And I know, because I've got a lot of the answers myself because of the relationship that I have being on the council. But you look at a budget, and I'll back up, which is a couple of years ago, if you went to the 1718 budget year, following into 1819 and this, and I'm not, I don't want to mislead everybody, I'm not picking on any department, I'm just explaining to what we get asked. And when we had a rec department that took care of all the summer events, took care of all the grounds, took care of the swimming pool, took care of, and his budget was $100,000 a year. And they had more kids participating then, and we can't help that because that's just the way times are. You're going to get kids three, four, five, six years less, five, six years more. And now you look at the rec department budget and throwing out at close to $200,000, $100,000, justifying the same events that...
I would respectfully disagree with you, sir.
I'm just trying to...
We have so many more things that we provide through the rec department. And we have reached so many more citizens than we ever have.
I understand.
And that costs money to run those events. We have so much more going on through the rec department and we have really one full-time staff person who is doing all of that.
Fantastic.
Effectively and safely. Please remember, if you're going back and looking through 2018, 19 versus where we were at at 2021, the reason you're seeing such an increase is because we have a brand-new department. And I think that gets forgotten sometimes. Not only do we have a brand-new department, but we have been successfully able to integrate that department into our services that we provide for our citizens, really at a minimal cost. Your revow has nothing to do with your taxes. Revow that was done has to do with the value of your home. That is what that is. The tax amount, the municipal tax dollar that we are asking for is to provide the services to the citizen. So revow and tax do not have any correlation other than your revow determines based on the mill rate that is set by taxes. And that's how that gets determined. The comparison of mill rates, if you want to start with 2018, the county was 6.2%. The school was 57.5%. And the town was 8.96% of your tax bill. Okay? So the municipal tax dollars that were asked for were only 8.96% of your actual tax bill. In 2019, 2020, it actually was only 7.43% of your tax bill. And last year, it was only 6.37% of your tax bill. This is the information that goes and comes straight from the state. This is, and it's broken down on everyone's tax bill when they receive that. So keeping in mind, I understand, nobody wants to pay taxes, but we have to pay them. We have to pay for services. They're not free.
Yeah, I don't think people are disputing...
We have. We have to provide services for our citizens. And the citizens that are asked of us are in this, or the services that the citizens have asked for are in this budget. Everything, every nickel, every penny, every dollar is accounted for. And there is not one want in any of this. We have heard so many misguided information, so many things that have said, we have brand-new this and we have, no, we do not. We only have two pieces of brand-new equipment. That's it, the ambulances. Everything else is bought either on a trade, through a grant, something that is years old. We have not bought anything that is brand-new at all. We do make it look like it's brand-new because we take a lot of pride in the work that we do here in Fort Fairfield, and we want our citizens to know that. So we take very good care of the equipment that we receive. We paint it, we make it look nice, we put new tires on it, we take care of the equipment as it comes into us. And we prepare and move forward each year doing that effectively, cost-effectively and safely. We are not asking for a huge increase. I think a lot of people are still thinking about that $1,054. That was back in January. We have moved way beyond that. We are into June. And we have held three public budget hearings and a council meeting every month since then. And we have discussed budget ad nauseam for several weeks. This isn't new information. This is information that has been collectively presented, carefully worked out and discussed amongst myself, the department heads and the council. We have identified to council that this is where we stand. If we go below this, we will need to start cutting services. And that, what that looks like for your citizens that need those services out there. That's something to remember. Council is responsible for that. And I will fight strongly to make sure that we are providing those citizens the safe, effective service that we always have, but without the funding, we can't do that.
I didn't hear you, Scott, when you made that motion. And after you had mentioned again, I clearly could hear you and I apologize to the table and the citizens here. But that motion that you made for the 2021 budget, was that...
It's the 2122 budget using 2021 figures, with exception of the police department.
I would vote that.
I'd make no... No, I'm not eliminating the police department. I want to vote their budget that they proposed.
Right.
Which is for 2021, it's $539,000 for this year. And they proposed $456,000 for this year. That's what I thought.
Yeah, I...
My concern is, the income that you're looking at, the COVID money and the increase in revenue sharing is a one-time deal. Next year, we're going to have to cover that and that's somewhere around $900,000. So there's going to be another increase along with, I understand it's only $168,000, but $168,000 is going to turn into $900,000. That's what I'm looking at. You've got to make some choices now because it's only going to get worse and everything else is more expensive. Gas and diesel is more, food is more, costs are going up, inflation's going up. This world is spiraling. And if we can level fund and try and get by for one year, see what happens. That's my proposal.
I think on that though, if you just pick these numbers off of the 2021 budget and say you requested $41,900, but you're going to have to use $40,500, you have to figure out where those funds are going and where they're coming from. You can't just say you're going to use these figures and then say, figure out what you're going to do with them. That's why I think we need to just take a little bit more time, whether it's a week, two weeks. Why? We are not clearly decided, so why rush it?
I agree with you. And even if we take the decision, Scott, I think we could put that in perspective and have it in front of us and we would, I'd feel better with that decision, but on the lines of Scott's motion. So if we have to table this just for a week or two...
Before we go to the table, so that's, we should do, we got to move all the budget.
Well, if we have to move all the budget, I would, I would take a motion to Scott's motion and second that, and I would, but I couldn't...
Scott, what is your motion?
Well, my motion for the 2122 budget was to take the figures off the 2021 budget in your proposal, as you have given a fresh coffee tonight. And accept those. Some are going to get a slight decrease, like the police department, because they requested less funds because there's less officers. But Public Works will go back to what they had, the library will go back to what they had, for a lot of state administrative, yes, for last year, the fire department will go back to what they had. Any other budgets? Recreation will go back to what they had.
But again, those figures need to be calculated and you can't even, we don't even know off the top of our heads if that's how sustained the departments.
It also doesn't have the 1% that was voted on.
Yes, there are some cost increases and there's going to be some decreases too, because some purchases were made last year that might not be made this year. I don't know. Everything's in the budget, is what I've been told. Every time, we seem to do okay.
So...
And right now, you're looking at a 13%. We still have 13% of our budget left and here we are, mid-June. So there's funds left over that haven't been used.
We have four, oh, my secrets.
This is what I'm saying. And it was the same last year. So they're very fiscally responsible. You give them that off to them, we need to make an adjustment. I guess we can, when it comes to that, because if you want to wait for the numbers, you know, wait for the school department and see what the state's going to do.
Well, that, I think we still have things to look at. Like, yes, I think that's something that can be considered, but we have to actually look at it. We can't just say, yep, those numbers, that'll work.
Well, they've done it for many years here on the council.
And look where we are.
They don't have any information.
So if we cannot extend, can I make a motion that we do not approve this budget at this point in time?
There's still a motion on the floor right now.
It was. There was no second.
There was no second. There was a second.
Okay.
So you can make any motion.
Okay, so then I motion that we do not approve the budget as written.
Second.
The motion was second. We don't approve the budget presented. Any other discussion?
Are you talking about this current budget?
Yep.
Is there, do you have a plan?
Yes, to continue to work on it.
Basically, if I can add, we'll take the 2021 budget and we're getting forth with the numbers that show that we have, that we can see on paper. Once that is put on paper, then we've got it, you know, just...
Right, prepare those numbers with the department's expenses and make sure that we can still have fully functioning departments on the cuts that you're proposing to give them.
We've gone over the three public hearings.
And you still have not covered something that I'm comfortable with.
That being said... Right now, our motion is only not to approve, we're not to go to the 2021, right? Clarify that.
Yep. The motion on the floor to not approve the proposed budget, 2021, our 2122. Any other discussion? I'll call for a vote, Scott. Now, Mark.
The motion is to...
The motion is to not approve the budget.
No, I won't approve the budget. That's... Right? Are we talking English or...
Yes.
The proposal is on not to approve the proposed budget for 2122, right?
Yeah.
And a second, a vote. So we're voting to not approve the budget.
2122.
For 2122.
So I'm voting against the motion. That's what I'm voting against.
I vote...
I'm voting for the motion.
Ballot.
Aye.
We vote no.
Any other recommendations?
Now that we have not approved the budget, but we have no plan for it, nothing on the table.
It's on the tables. The default budget is going to be on the table until the council is getting more information to make an informed decision. That's my argument.
Just want to be clear that we're not making the change. We're just defaulting to 2021, right?
Correct.
2021. That's by charter.
The services that we're providing now, until this council makes a decision. That's where it is.
I think, I really think with Scott's motion initially, with this drawn-out on sheet to show us the numbers and the citizens that we can work the numbers and make this work.
We've had numbers and sheets now for the last few months, and been working and working on it. And I think what's propelling, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's because of maybe the fear that has been tried to put upon us if we do approve this budget by certain citizens that have kind of made their opinions known publicly. And, you know, I guarantee we'll come back at the end of the month, we still will have something that we'll be happy with, and we'll still have that fear and that concern that... I'm not talking to you right now, please. So it's just a matter of coming together and saying, "Okay, this is what we can work with." We were going to see increases, you see increases all over within our economy. None of us are, you know, making big decisions on the pay that's been helpless.
So for council's information, just so you're aware, if you were to go back to Councilman Smith's vote, because of the revenue, that does not change. We can't go back to 2021's revenue. That changes every year. We're given that number, and that's it. So if you were to take last year's budget and then this year's revenue amount, because you would have to use the same number, you can't just arbitrarily use revenue numbers, that deficit without the increases that we have no control over and without the 1% already puts you at a deficit of $326,586. You may be looking at a moot point. I don't know. This is the first time this has been suggested to me, so I would have to go back and find out what that actual additional amount on top of the 326,586 deficit would be. But that's where it would stand if it were at the vote that you had done, minimum of 326,586. That's not even the final number.
That's what I'm saying. Not opposed to your idea. I just think that without putting the numbers in, hopefully, we don't even know what's...
The numbers are there.
Yeah, and I will reiterate again for council that by doing so, I know of one department that if we go back to the 2021 budget, we have already seen that that is not enough, and it will effectively change that service completely.
But that service that was offered on last year, this year's budget, did okay?
No. We are well above the amount that we budgeted for the fire EMS because we had no... It's a brand-new department. We could only project what we knew. But now we know. We know what it will cost to effectively and safely provide that service.
So the extra cost in just that, what does that figure? If we look at that?
That puts you at $408,868 without the additional costs that we are having to use and the 1% that was voted on. So you're already at almost the same amount that we're asking for. We're only asking for $434,926.
So where are we at now? We aren't... Any other recommendations?
Well, I think right now, it's like me anyway, knowing where we stand for what we've done so far, I couldn't tell you. But I feel better still, and it's not going to set our municipality back one bit. They're still working on the budget. I still would feel better if we tabled this for further review and take some numbers that we have, and we can throw a special council meeting anytime, even next week, and put the budget through. But I just feel because of the misconception of everybody here, and I don't want to see one of us make a decision that because, you know, where we are right now, I feel that we should at least table it for now until we review this back to the license decision. I would feel better walking out of here tonight.
And I don't think not making a decision is based off of fear. I think that not making a decision is based off of trying to do the best for everybody in the departments because we respect the work that they're doing and we respect the services that they give the citizens, and we want those services, and we want the best of those services, and we also want it to be fair to the taxpayers. So yes, we've had a lot of discussion on this, and yes, we've thrown a lot of time, not over the numbers, not over the numbers. But if we're not where we need to be, then we need to keep picking away. I don't know if we'll give up and say, "Okay, we're done." We don't just make it go away, because then it's going to come back and bite us in the
So I'm looking for a motion.
I... I'll make a motion that we...
Go ahead.
Well, let me open a motion, but we didn't say...
No, no, that's fine.
I'll make a motion that we meet back next Wednesday with new numbers and also...
Next Wednesday or Thursday. One week from today, we meet Thursday. This is Thursday.
Thursday.
So the 24th.
Make a motion that we meet on the 24th for reviewing the budget. Can we take a vote that night also?
Absolutely.
Okay, for the purposes of taking a vote. I second that.
So we have a motion on the second. Re-ask the numbers, meeting in on June 24, little Thursday, at 6 o'clock.
I would just like to have a discussion on that as to what our plan is in order to have some different looks at the numbers. And what I would request is that the departments bring... Yes, we have the details of your budgets for each department, but I know it's going to be broken down a little bit more. For example, you know, I would like to see a little bit more information on, you know, the repairs and maintenance of vehicles. I'm just picking one that I don't need to pick off the fire department. I know what you have. Sorry, I'm really not trying to. I just know that's the biggest expense, so that's where my focus has been. But I would like to see a little bit more detail of the breakdown of what these numbers are coming from. And I know there must be some breakdown somewhere.
You are correct. That is exactly how we get to our numbers that we get to.
Okay, so I'd just like to see those extra little details and...
I can guarantee you that staff will have all that information available.
Okay, and if that could be sent to us in advance, so we can...
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
But be prepared, it's a lot.
That's okay. It's a lot of party and a lot of responsibility, and I just want to make sure.
Yep, perfect.
I guess any discussion? That's all right. That's one for discussion. So we got a motion and a second to re-ask the numbers June 24.
6:00 PM.
6:00 in the evening. Project 2122. Any other discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote. Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
I also vote aye.
Mr. Ken Stratten of the Fort Fairfield Frontier ATV Club is asking for council to approve the use of an access route on the North Caribou Road from the bridge through Riverside Park near the Fort Fairfield Dog Park. Mr. Stratten met with Councilman Smith and Councilman Babin, as well as myself and Director Hanson. It was discussed that the park is not a safe route for the ATV riders, as well as the citizens that are utilizing the park. The recommendation is that council votes no to the access route on the North Caribou Road from the bridge through Riverside Park near the Fort Fairfield Dog Park.
If I may, Mr. Stratten came to visit me...
If this is in reference to the Row Cross at Flannery Flats, we need to discuss that after recommendation. There's a motion.
All right. Well, I just...
Yep, I've got it all right here.
All right.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion. Any other recommendations?
Motion second.
We have a motion on the second, an access route to North Caribou Road from the bridge to Riverside Park. Any discussion?
Yes, well, I just wanted to go back 10 years, 12 years. That was state-approved and was an access route for quite a few years. Matter of fact, it went across the bridge up to the North Caribou Road as far as we used to live burrows, burrowed in the beginning. That was an access route for many, many, many years. At that time, there never was any barrows, accidents, there was never fatalities. I don't even think hardly any complaints. They can go back and from records, I'm sure. What I'm stating is it was an access route for many, many years. Changes for weather problems dissolved in probably five, six, seven years from now, and Mr. Stratten took the ATV club over, done a wonderful job with it, he really has. So he's really not asking for anything that wasn't already there. It's been there for a lot of years. And I myself, back when I was an active off-road ATV year, or biker, I used it myself from experience, and it was a great access route, and we never had any problems. And there have been that a lot, and they work hard. And I say they, Mr. Stratten and the club, and they've taken three steps forward and 10 steps back, and he's fought for every inch of every trail and stayed the guidelines and got permission. And this is not an alternate route. It is a secondary route to provide economics. And I for one am a boondoggle, and I can say that it's a big impact in our community for this. And seeing that it was already used for many years as an access route, the land property to access to, from that road to the trailer that has been clearly identified and commissioned by him. So he's not asking for anything that was meant to spend all this an access route up until it was waiting to be provided.
I'm confused, sir. Are you talking about through the park and by the dog? You're talking about Flannery Flats?
Yeah, he's not taking...
I just want to clarify. He's not talking about what the recommendation was at all. He's talking about an alternative route.
Yeah. He...
He's not dealing with this.
Right.
You don't confuse the issue.
Right.
We have to finish out this vote, and then we can just...
Okay.
And again, the main reason for the recommendation is because of safety. They used to be able to move on the trail years ago, but now we get the park and the Dog Park, of course, children play, which we didn't have 10 years ago, which is very scary. So it's a safety issue, an liability issue.
Right. Well, we had, back then, we had one, two, three, four, five, probably a dozen houses on that street, and half a dozen on the other side of the street, and they had kids, dogs before.
94.
Yeah.
94.
When Ethan focuses to Mark and I, when we talk, this is only an alternative, that got me.
That's right.
It's not, he's not looking for to open that up right now.
And also, when we met with Mr. Stratten, Mr. Hanson and I, we also are not opposed to the Flannery Flats at all. The only thing we're opposed to is going through the park and by the Dog Park.
So is he already using the Flannery Flats? Is that what he's currently using?
He needs permission from council to be able to do that.
Yeah, this is all going for...
And from a DOT.
Right.
That's a DOT road. We're not opposed to it.
No.
We really can't endorse it.
Right.
What we're opposed to is that the ATV's physically going through the park, but they can't tell them to play, not on the road.
Right.
So for the safety, I don't confuse the chairman, I ask that we take a vote on the recommendation first, and then we can discuss Flannery Flats. There's a motion second that we do not like access on the bridge through the park and near the Dog Park. Any other discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote. Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
I also vote aye. I believe that there's going to be another row. There's going to be another row or something like that, and we should put it on the agenda for another time.
Yeah.
This one here was just for the Dog Park. I, like I said, I'm all for ATV access and for business stuff like that, but for this situation here...
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So, I mean, if they want some...
And I thought that's what this was for asking permission.
So we're not able to vote or can we...
I wouldn't because we haven't had proper discussion.
Excuse me. No business approved this for year 2122, commits a license.
The hearing was opened at 12:00 noon by reading the duly posted and published notice of public hearing. A list was provided that showed the prior license holders and noted the applications and fees received on the following permits. Victualers, refuse haulers, dance, special amusement, septic system installers, automobile graveyards, hawkers and petos. Mr. Leveque stated for the record that he recommends the issuance or renewal of all licenses listed as the fees are collected. Mr. Leveque also stated that there were not any other comments orally or in writing prior to the start of the hearing. The floor was open to comments and questions. Mr. Leveque mentioned for the record that he did not have any authority in the issuance of the licenses until the town council voted to authorize the issuance of the licenses. There being no further comments, the hearing was closed at 12:30 PM. Recommendation is that council accept Mr. Leveque's recommendation.
So move. Second. Motion on the second to approve. Here. You're not a call for a vote. Paul.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Your school 2122, the ones of the town officials are board members.
The following town officials require annual appointment. Road Commissioner Darren Hanson, Health Officer Chief Timothy Browning, Plumbing Inspector Richard Leveque... Well, that's hard to say, Tony. Code Enforcement Officer Richard Leveque, Sub-Registrar Trudy O'Neil. The town clerk sent letters to all board members to inform them of their terms expiring June 30, 2021, on April 28. As of June 17, 2021, we have had... As of June 17th, 2021, we have had one person notify us that they do not wish to remain on the library board of trustees once their term is up and we have received an application from Brienne Boober who is interested in serving on the library board of trustees that would replace Trisha Lagnor when her term expires on June 30th, 2021. Staff will continue to advertise for, to individuals to fill vacancies moving forward. The recommendation is that town council appoints the town officials as presented, appoints Ms. Boober on the library board of trustees and reappoints all other board and committee members whose terms are expiring on June 30th, 2021.
So move. Second.
I have a motion on the second. Here now I'll call for a vote, Bob.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Mark. I also vote aye. Authorize audit services for the Felchman Company LLC.
So council has in possession the very lengthy letter from Felchman Company. If you want me to read the whole letter, I would be happy to do so, but, um, so I would make the recommendation that council authorize audit services from Felchman Company LLC for fiscal year 2021.
So move. Second.
Motion on the second. Authorize services from Felchman Company LLC, any discussion? Here now I'll call for a vote, Scott.
Aye.
Mark. Bob.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Prepaid taxes and tax club, Melissa.
Prepayment of taxes is authorized by 36 MRSA subsection 506. For several years, the town has offered a tax club so that taxpayers can pay their taxes in 12 monthly payments. Payments are made from July to June and are due on or before the 10th of each month. The town commits taxes on October 1st, so payment of any taxes prior to that date is a prepayment. Based on information received from Maine Municipal Association's Legal Services, the town council needs to approve prepayment authority each year and that prepayment is only for the next annual tax commitment, not for multiple future tax commitments. The recommendation is that council authorizes the tax collector to establish a tax club for the 2122 tax commitment.
So move. Second.
I have a motion on the second. Any discussion? Here now I'll call for a vote, Bob.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Minutes on May 19, 2021, regular council meeting and June 7, 2021, special council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes on May 19, 2021, in our regular council meeting and the minutes on June 7, 2021, in our special council meeting.
Second. I have a motion on the second. Minutes on, May 18, 2021, in our regular council meeting and June 7, 2021, special for council meeting. Any discussion? Here now I'll call for a vote, Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Warrants, 26 and 27.
I'll read warrant 26 and 27 consecutively if council doesn't mind. Warrant 26 in the amount of $103,643.64 was completed on May 24th, 2021. Warrant number 27 in the amount of $331,210.23 was completed on June 9th, 2021. Checking account balance as of June 9th, 2021 is $1,087,522.66 and Machias Savings is $5,000. We are currently, um, spending 4.41% below budget. The budget is 91.67%, where we should be and we've only spent 87.26%.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for warrant number 26, $403,643.64. Warrant number 27, $331,210.23.
Second. I have a motion on the second to accept warrant 26 and 27. Any discussion? Here now I'll call for a vote, Bob.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Any other business?
The end of fiscal year 2021 is June 30th, 2021. The town office will need to be closed that day to prepare and close out the fiscal year. The town office will reopen on July 1st, 2021 at 7:30 AM. The recommendation is that town council vote to approve the closing of the town office on June 30th, 2021 for end of fiscal year, closing of financials.
Second.
I have a motion on the second to approve the closing of town office on June 30th, 2021. Any discussion? Here now I'll call for a vote, Bob.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
I also vote aye.
Chairman, I have a letter that I received today that I'd like to read for council. Um, this is from Tamara Hill Collins, the Executive Director of the Jefferson Carey Foundation. Dear Ms. Powers, on behalf of the Jefferson Carey Foundation, the Pinker Rustic Project and all of us at Carey Medical Center and Pines Health Services, I would like to thank you for your generous donation in the amount of $1,381.12, the proceeds from the Community Pink Patch Project. Your thoughtfulness, generosity and support are so very much appreciated. Thank you again and all the best, stay safe and well, Tamara Hill Collins.
You have a second to assess it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, one executive session to discuss an MRSA 4056A.
First of all, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second to vote for this session. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote, Bob.
Aye.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Mark.
I also vote aye. Second way for showing this right? We're going to win this session.